Okay, all right, welcome everyone. First meeting of the year, January 13, 2020. Let's start by standing. We'll have a prayer and then a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful new day, first meeting of the month of January and of the new year 2020. We thank you for blessing us in 2019 and we pray for the same in 2020. We thank you for those that are here in attendance today, whether they be taxpayers, interested citizens, or employees of the county. We just ask for guidance and direction from this court on each and every agenda item. Just direct us to make decisions that are in the best interest of this county. We pray for our, we pray for all of our first responders, our servicemen and women, wherever they may be serving, that you would be continually watching over and protecting them. We thank you for your blessings upon this community and pray that it would continue and that you would bless our state officials, our county officials, our national officials, especially our president during this time when there are so many things going on. We just thank you for the direction that you provide for us. And turn this meeting over to you now, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just after 9:00 a.m. on January 13, 2020, we will start with item number one. This is our time for public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with our Open Meetings Act. Anyone have an opening statement or remark that you would like to make at this time? All right, we'll move to item number two, and we need to consider and possibly approve minutes from our last meeting of the year 2019. That was on December 23rd.
Make motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to approve that set of minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, consider and possibly approve a budget reclassification for Justice of the Peace Two to allow payment of accrued leave and comp time for a retiring employee. Let me read just a brief statement that came to me as an email, and we'll elaborate on it, but I think this covers it quite well. Good morning. Please add an agenda item to the meeting for JP Two. Irma Dunn, she is requesting a budget amendment to move funds within the JP Justice Court Technology Fund from one line item to another. She needs to move $3,000 from computer expense to salaries. The current budget includes $10,000 for computer expense, which means that this amendment will have no financial impact on the overall budget. I have confirmed with her that her department does not have additional technology needs in excess of the remaining $7,000. In fact, only once during the past four years has her department used more than $3,600 of this line item. This increase to salaries from this budget amendment will be used to pay for the accrued leave and comp time for Terry Adelot, who is, who has retired. SB 1840 specifically allows the JP Court Technology Funds to be used to pay for clerk salaries and benefits, even if it's not related to technological enhancements. You've covered it well there. I don't know how to elaborate on this. But basically, we have one of these unique situations where we do have a retirement that comes along every once in a while, and with that retirement, correct me if I'm wrong, Irma, along with that retirement, we have some sick pay and comp time and vacation, et cetera, that needs to be written as a check to that employee who is leaving. And we don't necessarily budget for that. That's been something that we've always typically taken care of in a way similar to this, because we have no idea what that liability is, and we could put a big lump sum into our budget to cover accrued leave time, but we have opted not to do that in the past since it has not been a significant item. So Barbara or Irma, would you like to elaborate on this and give us any more information?
I do want to correct one thing. I believe that we don't pay sick leave, vacation and comp time. Any sick leave that is accrued is not paid for time. And actually, she don't have any comp time because we don't give comp time to the folks. They don't work at all, you know, for them to have comp time.
Okay. So this would specifically be...
It's not our vacation time.
Just vacation time, okay?
She don't have any kind of accrued sick time that they get, that pay so much of it?
No, sick time, they don't get paid sick time. Historically, counties not pay sick leave every time. You do that, you know. Or maybe? Not that way. No, whenever I left the county, I had to bring something and I didn't have anything for that.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else? And $3,000 is the amount that will take care of this?
I have to conduct a call, or whatever, if I remember, she wants me to conduct a call.
Okay. So we'll slide $3,000 out of the $10,000 computer expense line into salaries to take care of this, and this is not paying for additional salaries of current, current and existing employees?
Correct.
All right, and we'll be able to probably cut that budget in the future from $10,000 to perhaps even less, since we're not using that much.
We'll see how it goes.
We'll see how it goes, all right. Commissioners, any questions about this? If not, I need a motion, yea or nay?
Make a motion.
Motion is made to do what?
That we approve this and use the money?
Motion is made to approve this $3,000 reclassification in JP Two.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Irma. Anything else? If not, I put, I put you at the top so you could get to work if you needed to.
Thank you. I think we're...
Item number four, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start in precinct one. Commissioner Riddle?
We've just, we're picking up trees and patching and putting in culverts. It seems to be about all we can get done because at this time.
All right, precinct two.
All right, we've been patching some roads and picking up a lot of cleanup, a lot of cleanup, and burnt some brush piles and cleaning ditches around the county. And I was wanting to, we went out and picked up a bunch of junk and debris and trash one day, and then Tim's guys went out and got the trustees. They went out on 2400 for two days in a row, and they got 46 bags of trash and all kind of miscellaneous stuff you couldn't put in a bag. They really picked up a lot of stuff. Now, thank you for that, Tim. What's going on?
We've done some patching. We put in some cul, about three culverts on 3230, and we got another one, we got to put on 3070. And we've tilled up and packed down portions of 3260 that we've going to do some seal coating on next year, so that the, scared Saturday the rain would wash it up, but it all held up.
We've been, been doing some patching and installing culverts. Today, we're picking up some trees and stuff that we had to go out over the weekend and get out of the road, just kind of pushed it over to the side till today, and they're picking that up. We've got, got all of our culverts purchased that were, where we can get started installing them on 4315, and fixing to start working on it, try to get it ready for seal coating this summer. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Item number five, discuss the shooting range located in precinct two with possible action to follow. Commissioner Fitch?
Well, we're unclear if that shooting range has ever been shut down, and some of the officers go out and get their hours or train some every once in a while out there. Not used a whole lot. There's a few people from the county will use it. So I wasn't sure if it was shut down. Couldn't find any records on it being shut down, but it's getting to be a safety issue. The landowner adjacent to me or maintenance facility, which is Nate Prefort, is building a new house and possibly shop, so there's a lot of activity coming in and out of that property. And it's brought to our attention on the weekends, there's been quite a bit of people going out shooting, and for safety issues, we wanted to shut down that, letting people shoot out there into the dirt piles like they did in the past. And just want to be on the record that it's no more shooting out there at that maintenance facility on that, the old shooting range, what they called it.
Is this something that is your decision or is this our decision?
I just wanted to bring it to the court to just be on official record, get the word out there. Like I told the landowners, it'll take a little while to get the word out for everybody. I'll try to put a sign up, it's no more shooting. And the sheriff's department and JP offices, they can, they can use the city's gun range. It's out on, off of County Road 2300, and that's who they usually use most of the time. So I don't think we're going to have a problem with our own training that we do as far as shooting.
Is this a, something that you think is necessary because of the activity going on related to the building of the house?
Yes.
And might that come to an end, though?
Well, it's a county road, actually, that circles that maintenance facility. That's a county road, and anybody can drive down it if they want to. Plus, there's just a lot of activity now, and with small children riding bicycles and four-wheelers and everything, something got a stray bullet or something ricocheted off of anything, it could be dangerous, I would say. I wouldn't want anybody shooting towards my property.
So the area behind that has changed over the years?
Yes, it's changed, so otherwise, it was always just heavy woods and hardly any activity around there. So do increased activity. I would even say my own self is as large as Diamond Sees facility is now compared to what it was when that shooting range came into play with the leaves off the trees and a stray bullet. One could, I know it could land on their property because they, they cover about 20 acres now, and it's a lot of buildings, so a stray bullet could pass, possibly go over the trees and, and land on their facility. So I think it'd just be a good safety issue to just let everybody know we're going to shut that down.
Once you put that in the form of a motion, give it even a little more strength.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to discontinue shooting at the Titus County Precinct Two Maintenance Facility, which is the former shooting range. One time, we, we used it for training, so just shut down the shooting out there at that precinct two maintenance facility.
Okay, you got a motion by precinct two commissioner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of this closure, say aye.
Aye.
And how will you, what kind of signage will you use to make that?
Oh, there's only a couple ways to drive or walk down over to that area. There's really not even a good parking place out there. If there's one place you can turn off the highway, I'll, I'll make me one of those little signs like we use for our county roads, and I'll letter it with our...
Don't think it needs to be something big?
I don't think so. I can actually make those smaller signs cheaper and reuse them. I'll put one where they come in, I'll put one over there at the dirt pile, so if they walk around there, I say, hey, we're not supposed to shoot here, so make sure.
Okay.
Joan, I think I can tear the berm down.
Yes, I'll probably end up tearing those berms down soon as I can when it dries up.
Can you put all your baggage at address where they should be?
We don't have another public, there's not a public gun range anywhere else in Titus County that I know of.
Yeah, where the...
Where at?
Shaw and Roberts has got a...
Oh, Shaw and Roberts, what's that called?
Clayson.
Clayson Moore. Yeah, they can go to Clayson Moore.
You can not put all there so that I know that they're somewhere I can access.
Okay, I'll put a phone number on there. He can get ahold of it.
You have to pay to do that?
You have to pay to go out there, yeah. But it's a good safe shooting range.
It's all right, they got money for the ammunition.
Try, save your brass.
We're eliminating the only free shooting range.
I guess so. I, I didn't, I didn't know, I thought it was shut down years ago. I've only just ran into, in this whole year, maybe four people that I've seen come out there and shoot their gun in a whole year. And I know John Marks, Mr. Lindsey, went out there and shot a couple times for qualification.
And right now, I don't think it'd be a problem, I was just talking to Sheriff down the road, you know, this is all dependent on the sheriff, the police department team that allows to do it.
Yes, yes.
Their abilities, and they're, they sometimes prioritize, obviously so, their schedule, so you have to call. Right now, the sheriff is telling me that he's able to use it.
Yeah, as far as that location, it's getting crowded out there, and there's a highway right beside it. It's probably not going to be used, and we probably couldn't make that available in the future, but I do have about 100 acres out in Monticello lease from Tocco. We all have some separate leases that Tocco has that's pretty remote, that we could use those locations if we have to, to set up a pile of dirt and have us a shooting range, so.
The city has a first class, so it's very close.
Yes, ours is just shoot off the tailgate. Bring your own box to shoot at.
There's a, we went to when I've become a deputy sheriff volunteer, whatever they call them guys, training. We went to the gun range at the college, the indoor gun range and an outdoor gun range. That's when I outshot the sheriff.
They still have that out there?
Yeah, we, yeah, but that, I'm not sure if they let you do the indoor gun range now, well, they shut it down. Outdoor gun range, I can get my inmates out, do some work on that, we can follow that and use that again with you, too. Worse than worse, we could make a deal with Shaw, just like they're using the gun range at their show.
Sure, I think that makes more sense.
Yeah. Yes, and I show up, have gun tables and such, and it's marked off in distance what range you want to shoot at, so.
All right, item number six, consider an update to the county investment policy, designation of county investment officers, and possible designation of an investment committee with possible action to follow. Do you want to begin this discussion, or you want me to begin this discussion? I, I'll be very brief, and I'll turn it over to you. Oftentimes, we're asked about our investment policies, and I say often, whenever we have done refinancing of bonds, and Carl and I have in the past kind of stumbled through this and explained our very conservative policy that we typically utilize CDs or we use the investment pool with our excess funds. Barbara would like to see us have something a little more elaborate in the way of an investment policy and make sure that it's officially approved. It doesn't change what we can do. I think that it gives some more possibilities and just expands on what a county might could do with its excess funds. And I sent you all a copy of this document, and it's, you know, it's quite a few pages and quite detailed, but I think that it's appropriate for us to have this investment policy on record as an approved document. And likewise, I think it would be good for us to designate one or more officers or employees to serve as our investment officer. And whether or not you want to consider designating an investment committee as this document would authorize, we can do that. My personal input on this is that you should make the county auditor be our investment officer, and whether or not you want to expand and have an actual committee of two or three or four, whatever, I don't think you would find yourselves meeting very often, but nonetheless, you have the ability to do that. So we'll be looking, hoping for approval on this document so that the county can say, yes, we have an investment policy whenever we are asked, and we can provide this document. But I can assure you, it does not let anybody just run amok and make investments and all kinds of things. It would still come back to the commissioners' court for approval. A document like this just gives some guidelines, and I think it's more appropriate for counties that may have, you know, other situations going on there. But right now, again, we typically use CDs, or we have considered the text pool in the past for funds, and we try to invest locally where we can if the interest rates are comparable. With that, I'll ask Barbara if you have any additional input for that.
Well, the only thing I want to bring to your attention is the fact that this is just a formal adoption of the policy that the county has had for many, many years. There's not that big any of that changes, but we do have a formal policy. The other thing that if you decide to appoint a committee, we are required to make once a year. So it's not like we will be needing, you know, we'll, we can make more, but we are indeed required to make once a year. In addition to that, activist policies, the policy is adopted, I will bring a corporate investment report that's in writing that's showing you for all many years. I know Carl was giving you that information verbally in the past, but I will give you something in writing which is required with this document. And the last thing I want to bring to your attention is there's, the main thing this document talks about is our, the first priority we have is preservation of our funds, our cattle, the money we have on the policy. Then we're looking at liquidity to make sure the money is available so that we don't tie the funds up and we don't have the budget to work with, and then yield. So when we're looking at investments, we're not only looking for what's the best rate, we got to have access to the funds when we do those projects. And then once you approve the policy, we'll ask you to determine whether or not you want to have the investment group, the investment board. And then there's one more thing here that is just a portion of the policy, anyone that the county invests with, including our bank and paucatory, we are required to send them a copy of this policy so that they know the things that you agreed to invest with. Our policy here is very, very limited compared to if you looked at Galveston's. I looked at theirs, I looked at big counties and small counties in terms of where we need to be. Galveston's is a big, medium, and large law. The bank investment law, it's a lot of more involved investments, you know, the first order of business is make sure you understand what you're investing in. Some of those things are items that if you're not in any investment business, you don't understand it, and the county is not going to do that. So those things are not all for us here.
Did you say this document previously existed? Did you find anywhere where it was previously approved?
I found where it was adopted in '07, and it was a little note that said it was updated in '09, and then notes from the authors that they confirmed, from Carl or fifty, that had not changed. But we're supposed to annually bring it to court, and let y'all raise your hands to say that you read it and you agree to continue with it. So I'm just starting that process, initial formal process.
Well, I'm glad to know that, because when I had asked Carl about that, I wouldn't refer to, to this document. So I do think it would be good to have this. What's your personal thoughts on an investment committee?
That's your, that's your discretion. Whoever is on the committee is going to be required to attend the training. The training is, I believe it's 10 hours every two years. I'm going to be going, reaching aid holes at, at their location for secret cities and schools, too, so that I don't have to have an overnight study. I'm not willing to travel, but I don't have to travel. So I'll be going to that. We can certainly have a committee put together, and then I'm happy to sign the documents because without anyone else's name on there, because they're going to be very carefully, you know, we're not, we're not investing in things that are difficult to follow. We, we all understand how cities work and how, you know, tools work. So that would be your discretion. You know, if not the best, we, since I know it, if not the best, we have some people there to look at those things. But if you have that pleasure, we'll go with anything.
Why don't we begin with, we'll come back to that subject. Why don't we begin with consideration of, once again, formally approving this, and this should be something we do on an annual basis. Try to do that first of the year. All right, Joan, I think this would be a good idea. We're not discussing who the investment officer is or a committee, but just formally making this 2020 approval of this Titus County investment policy.
Make a motion.
Motion is made for approval by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, what do you think, does anybody feel the need to establish a, an investment For now, I'm going to take that as a no. We can always change that. This document that you approve gives you the ability and the right to do that at any time. Should you feel the need, maybe there will come a point when we have some considerations that might be outside of what we have normally done, and we can establish that committee at that time. I don't personally feel the need to do that. I just think that's really a condition of work at any time. All right, without any input, then I'll pass on to that. Is everyone comfortable with Barbara, our auditor, serving as our officer? Yes?
Yep.
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and formally make that a motion, if you would?
Make it a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to designate a county auditor as the investment officer. Second, seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Barbara, thanks for digging this up and letting us know about its existence. I'm glad to know that. And I'll assign this document, and we'll get, I'm going to keep a scanned copy, and I'll get you the original. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve updates to the subdivision regulations. We've had subdivision regulations in effect since, I think, about the fall of 2016, so just over three years. And typically, Joyce is the one that has to deal with issues that come up, and she's come up with some good ideas and some changes that we should make to our county subdivision requirements, including the checklist and the details in there. Most of these will make her life easier when people come and inquire about subdivision requirements and try to go through that rather in-depth process of getting a subdivision approved. And if you will approve these changes, we'll get these changes made to our formal policy, and then I'll get those changes made on the website so that people that refer to this from our county website, and many do, will see these changes. So let me go through these one at a time, and Joyce, chime in if you would like. Starting off on page one of 16 of the Titus County Development and Subdivision Check-Off List. This is the initial page that kind of lays out what is expected, not the body of the document. But one of the requirements is that Platts will be provided. You've seen those rolled up documents that we have in here, and it ultimately get filed with the clerk, and some of these are expensive for the, for the person who is the developer and may just, we, we think is unnecessary. But we have, in the past, required three of those large Mylars that are 18 inches by 24, and they, they are costly for people to produce, and Joyce says, in this day and age, there's really no need to provide those Mylars. And so previously, we said, and we said, Platt size shall be 18 by 24, including three Mylar originals and six reduced paper copies on eight and a half by 14. Joyce, and I assume Joan as well, feel like eliminating that Mylar material, that see-through material, and just utilizing standard paper, keeping the dimensions the same, 18 by 24, increasing the number of originals to four, four paper copies, 18 by 24, and one reduced copy that is on legal size, eight and a half by 14. And that reduced size is important to you because that's something that you can scan. What's the idea there?
The size of the scale, you can real quality, so it would be like that there's going to have a little issue, and now we can...
And if, if that size, it crowds everything, you still, where do these four, four large paper copies end up?
And one goes to the appraisal office.
Appraisal office?
Title company.
Title company?
We found one, we see one upcoming, or they've included on our plan, just like these companies.
Okay, so that blown up detail will exist permanently there. The one that you said for us, do we keep rolled up? The one that you said for us, do we keep rolled up copies here?
We do, we do, we do, we do. We do.
Okay. All right. So that's one change here. Moving along here, this is just a wording change. This is on item on the checkoff list. A filing fee must be paid at the time of filing the approved plat in the county clerk's office. Joyce just suggests we add on that dollar figure filing fee of $121 so that people know what they're looking at financially when they read over this. Now let me delve into the body of this document. This is item one, which has sub items A through L. The first paragraph of item one says a completed application with the six sets of prints and the three smaller documents. We've gone over that. That will change to four 18 by 24 paper copies along with the one smaller copy. This is item H that previously read, you are required to provide a certificate of approval signed by the designated representatives of the governmental entity having jurisdiction for onsite sewage facility permitting and 911 addressing and acknowledgement. We need to reword that. First of all, let's, let's say exactly who this is. We have a county environmental officer. Don't leave the person who's reading over this wondering, well, who is that designated representative? If they know it's the county environmental officer, somebody can direct them to Clint Bane or whoever that might be in the future, easier than somebody having to guess who that designated representative. And also let's eliminate one of his responsibilities being 911 addressing and acknowledgement. That's not really the designated representative of the governmental entity's responsibility. So I would suggest the rewording say, a certificate of approval signed by the county environmental officer having jurisdiction for onsite sewage facility permitting. The next item there is item number I. There shall be space provided on these original plats for the county judge to sign indicating approval of the commissioner's court. Let's also leave space on there for the county clerk. We need the clerk's signature as well as the county judge. So we're simply adding and county clerk to that item. Item number L in that same item one, previously stated, alternative, alternatively, the developer may submit estimates of construction costs. This is talking about their, your road requirements and the bond and all that stuff. The developer may submit estimates of construction costs to the county road engineer or the precinct commissioner. Obviously, we no longer have a county road engineer. Let's eliminate that wording and just simply say you'll submit those construction costs to the precinct commissioner. Okay. In Roman numeral four, item A2 was a requirement that the subdivision developer must furnish proof by sworn statement of the owner of that real estate on the face of the plat that there are no existing liens against the property within the subdivision or re-subdivision, or in the case of encumbered property, a statement by the lien holder which acknowledges an existing lien against the property. This to me seems like an unnecessary item. I think it's a rare, a rarity where a developer's not going to have some kind of a lien on the property itself. He's going to use that as, you know, as collateral to do the development. We have not been requiring them to do this. I think it's, I think it's unnecessary. I don't see any benefit to the county of knowing that they've got money borrowed on this particular property that they are, that they are subdividing. If you see it differently, tell me why. Joyce and I are in agreement on this. We have not had anybody that has provided this in the past and have not required that. Doesn't seem to be a need for it.
They're not required a bond or?
No, that, that has nothing to do with the bond. This would be like, let's say that you've got 20 acres and you decide you want to cut it up into lots. And so you go and borrow at the bank against that property. You put that property up as collateral and say, I'm going to put in some roads and I'm going to do some tree removal and I'm going to go through the plating process with the county and I'm going to put in some water lines and/or sewage lines. And so in order to generate that kind of money, more than likely he would borrow against his property. Now, he may have other assets that he can use to pay for that kind of work, but this has nothing to do with his requirements to the county of building a proper road or having proper sewage system. That make sense?
Yeah. The one back, brother L, the one before that, the cost, the commissioner or the engineer determined the cost of building a road?
No, 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 no. Let me read the entire section before that. The plat shall be accompanied by the necessary supporting documents, which shall include an eternal attorney, title opinion, or title company report, which shows the ownership, easements, liens, deed restrictions, if those exist. And a corporate surety bond or a revocable letter of credit. You remember when we put that requirement in there, $189 per linear foot? If you have to put a road through the middle of your subdivision, we want to be sure that you're building that road properly and we want you to put up some kind of evidence of your ability to complete that road if we grant you that subdivision approval. And we're asking them to give us some estimates as to what they think it's going to cost to build that road. That's an alternative. If the $189 is just way too high, they can submit to you, hey, you know, don't make me put up a bond for $189 a foot. I can do this for half of that cost and here's the, here's the proof of being able to do that. All the, the only change here is the developer may submit these estimates of construction costs to the county road engineer or the precinct commissioner. We're just eliminating the word county road engineer is the only change we're making since we don't have one. Nothing else, none of the other requirements are changed. And that, and that's it. Let me run down those one more time.
Good. Let me, the, where it said the 911, to drop that off, the 911, I think, as far as I know, AdCO determines that. I mean, they called me when they wanted an address and said, you got to put a sign up on that more than one house or whatever it was and declare a private road. But they require, and they called me back to make, to check with me to make sure they followed through. So I think is that their responsibility?
The only issue we've run into there is, again, if you decide to develop that 20 acres into 21 acre lots and you call COG because you have a requirement here, they're going to tell you, we're not giving you any addresses for those individual lots until you sell a lot and that homeowner or that lot owner contacts us. In other words, we're not going to pre-address that for you. I don't know why that is, but that's the answer that they're, that they're getting. They're still going to require you to have a, an address. We just want to know that there's no reason why they wouldn't be able to provide addresses for this subdivision. You see the difference that you're not actually getting a number and a street name, et cetera, from COG. That will not be done until later on in the process after this thing has already been approved and the developers start selling those lots.
The situation I had was that there was a house at the end of the road and they were putting, and there was actually two houses and they were going to build the third house. And so they asked for an address from AdCO and AdCO said, we're not giving you one because there's no road numbers on that road. And so then they called me and said, you need to identify that road by, and they put in, given it a number, a private road number for their 911 records.
Because it didn't previously have any identification for that particular road.
Right. And don't have to have. It was just a driveway.
A driveway originally and it's gotten expanded to have multiple homes.
Right.
It doesn't have to have one if there's, there's less than three houses on that property or down, down that away, they don't have to have but, but, you know, road, private road.
Less than three, so once it hits three?
Once it hits three, they, they have to, have to do it then.
So a family driveway into a family owned piece of property, once that third dwelling goes in, it, it needs to get a number?
Yes, sir. If they, if anybody contacts them and they've already got two in, at, at that location, the third one, once the third one comes in, they will have, they will have to be designated a private road. That's what they've always told me.
Well, all we're changing here is we're not making that a requirement of the environmental officer. Previously, we lumped that under, under him. That's a COG requirement. Let me run through these one more time. We're changing the requirement on the number of pieces of paper that the developer brings to us, eliminating the Mylar, requiring four large and one small. We're identifying the $121 filing fee instead of just referring to a filing fee. We are designating the county environmental officer rather than just saying the designated representative of the governmental entity. And we're requiring space, not only for the county judge to sign, but the county clerk as well on that plat. We're deleting the word county road engineer since that's no longer applicable on who you submit road estimates to. And we're eliminating the requirement that the landowner provide a sworn statement that there are liens against the property. That's all I've got. Joyce, did I forget anything? All right. With your approval, we will get those changes made and get that also changed on the website.
Make that motion.
Who said that? Commissioner Applewhite makes that motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider and possibly approve replacement and upgrade to the fire alarm system at the senior meal center, 1406 North Edwards, at a cost of $1,788. You've got a copy, an eight and a half by 11 there in front of you that I've given to you from Zach Blunt, who is with Advance Alarm out of Paris. They take care of all of our fire alarm systems and this one, he says, is about vintage 1995 and it's just not fixable. It needs to be replaced regardless of the fact that it really needs to have some more capabilities to meet code. And just simply put, you know, I have red tagged it. He says it is non-functional. And if you were to have an accident over there or that building was to be burned, your insurance company could and probably would deny it if you knowingly have a non-functioning alarm. So when he called me, he said it'll be somewhere under $2,000 to do this with all new stuff. But you can see what he is proposing there. A brand new fire alarm panel. This one will have cellular dial-out capability in case the phone lines get cut or, or for whatever reason, the tenant up there decided they didn't need to continue to pay for telephones. This will have cellular dial-out capability. One addressable smoke detector, two addressable manual pool stations, two visual devices. And these are going to be these real bright strobes that go on, go off there to alarm folks of a, of a fire or whatever else has caused that fire alarm to go off. So rather than loud sirens, you've got these flashing strobes. It'll have backup battery and this includes testing, inspecting, and programming of the system. So essentially you've got a new alarm system here, $1,788. And you currently have a non-functioning system that's not going to get fixed either.
Is there an annual charge or this is a one-time charge?
No, they're, this is one-time charge. He, they do the installation. Ours is monitored by the 911 here locally.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion's for approvals made by Commissioner Parker to install this new fire alarm system at the senior meal center.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number nine, approve oral and written reports of county officials. Anything we need to know about this new format here?
No, sir. You, you, well, yes, sir. This looks a little different from when I provided to you last commissioner's court. You'll find that this will be the report that you get for the first meeting of the month and the report you get for the second meeting of the month will look like the one that you had at the end of last month. This is part of the statute, so I've read the statute, got the requirements there on top of that and then how we're meeting those requirements. If you turn to the first page, there's a site that revenue includes your January, this is the month like to date, not the entire month of January, who the rest of that, when January's over. And you can see the revenues and it's in the background there, this is strictly cash basis. So all of this is listed. Then we can turn to the next report. The next report is like a trial and error sheet. So we're required to give you a condition of account of the books. So you can see there, the condition of the books really is more like a balance sheet item, so it's going to be like a financial statement. So you can see the assets, liability, and return balance. The first total, the third column there, it says total fund balance is as of September 30th. Then you have the revenue and then expenditures through the month of December. This is December's report. And it shows you where our fund equity now is what Net Data calls it, which is still fund balance, just another word for the same thing. Shows the balance as of the end of December.
Which is designated at the very top there in the center. You'll see summary totals by fund for December. So this is, we assume that you've had time then to close out the previous months.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So there are all the funds with your condition. The next section is the report that your customer's seen, you want them crawling back in every month. It's, it has the balance on it on page four. That is the same dollars that our treasurer has on county board. This is cash in the month. This is the one that you sent.
That's updated through. That's updated through last Friday.
That's, that is at this morning.
As of this morning. If you look back there on that third from the final page, here's where you can keep track of your total debt related to the loop.
If you compare that third to the final page, the third page at the end is, um, as of 9/30/19. If you turn to the next page, it's updated after the bond refunding that we get in November. So if you compare the, if you see my check out, you can see that we saved $3.13 million on that bond refunding. And then the last, the last item that county auditors kind of have the, the option to put each other out of the interest, I listed for you here the payroll, the gross salaries and the county pay benefits, just to let you know that the economy impact to Tyler's County is about $448,000 a month that is put out on the gross payroll. I need to bring the numbers in, throw that back. Uh, so each one is something. There's something else you'd like to say? To make this money happen.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite. Second. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need your signature. Remember Barbara's asked us to start signing these like we do the treasurer's report. Next meeting, we'll have, uh, Lanny Walker here from Arnold Walker to, uh, go over the annual audit, which they have completed. No surprises, clean opinion, uh, positive comments from Lanny, but he'll be here next, next week, or two weeks. Item number 10 is our treasurer's report. We received our loop payment, $4.2 million. Thank you. Okay, all right. That's our semi-annual loop reimbursement from TechStop. Motion to approve treasurer's reports made by Commissioner Applewhite. Second. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Need your signature on that one as well. Item number 11, approved budget amendments.
Um, I'm definitely, I have to one job approved at the last meeting for precinct. They need one, three, four, and then I'll have the other one that you put today for Arnold. So there's really nothing new.
That was related to, uh, D. Vagan's office supplies and the, how he interacted with the, you know, payment of driver's education fees and had come up short, and so we needed to replenish that. That's the one from last meeting and then we'll see next week, the one we just did today, uh, regarding JP two. Need your signature there. So let's go ahead and approve that. Did we approve it last week?
We did.
Really did, or really not?
We did, we did. And same terms today.
Okay. Then no other budget amendments besides what we've already approved. Item number 12, assigned pay orders and approved payment of bills.
Make a motion to pay bills.
Motion was made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 13, closing comments, if any, uh... Couldn't come up with any earlier. I don't have any now. I, uh, I don't have any for today. Commissioner Parker?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Commissioner Applewhite?
One thoughts and prayers go out to Jimmy and Barbara Parker for the, also Barbara's mother. We wanted to send prayers to them.
Her mom?
That Saturday. Services is not going to be till next week, right? Well, we've got a immediate funeral home. It had, uh, one today to finalize everything, but right now it looks like it, the visitation will be Saturday night, uh, at the funeral home and then services will be at Delwood Assembly on Monday, uh, I meant on Sunday. Uh, they're hoping for one, but it may be two. But it should, it should be finalized here this afternoon.
I did think of one comment. Pam Holmes in our Elections Administration Office was conducting interviews last week for her number two position. Uh, she had, uh, retirement, the teacher books retired or, or discontinued her employment voluntarily, uh, as the number two person. And I sat in on those interviews. So five, five interviews and I sat in on four of them, all the interviews. I hired a, uh, a good, uh, good candidate, so she will, and she is keeping that office at two employees, Pam herself and then the, uh, new lady Debbie Hinahosa, uh, will be the second in command over there. But anyway, things are going well over there and Debbie has some experience. She's been one of the, uh, judges and so was familiar with the process. So anyway, she advertised for that position, had several resumes and did several interviews. We made the hires and the, 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 the.
Um, I was just, uh, wanted to make a few comments on, uh, the Riddle building that we own over here. I'm going to do some research on that. I, I, my question is, should we keep that building? And I'm going to do some research and I'll present that back to the, to the court, what the pros and cons are, what I, what I find. Um, that's just one of the things I'm working on. And we'll go from there.
Commissioner Riddle?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That concludes our meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Make it motion. Motion by Commissioner Parker for adjournment, second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.